Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, welcome to the June 8, 2021 Audit Committee Meeting. If you will, please join me in a word of prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for the rain that we so needed. Thank you for the right to gather and assemble and to govern ourselves. Be with us this morning as we hear issues and discuss them and make votes on things that affect not only ourselves but our neighbors and our community and Columbia County as a whole. Be with us as we make these decisions and help us to make those decisions and cast those votes in fairness and in truth. In your name we pray, amen. Join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. The republic of peace, God, physical liberty, justice, law.
Thank you, we have a quorum with five commissioners present. Gentlemen, if you will, please look over the minutes of the previous meeting and give me a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you. The minutes are approved. Is there an approval of the agenda? Do we have any changes?
No changes to the agenda, ma'am.
Changes, we're going forward with the agenda as printed. On the debate agenda, let's see, we have Management Services Draft Report. What do we have right here? Come forward, Mr. Snyder, and tell us. Actually, before you get started, I have a question on the minutes of the last meeting. It ended with you saying something about working on the hotel motel tax. But we don't have it on this agenda, is there?
Yes, I do have, I have some work complete on that. The, spent a little bit more time on the water utility vision this time around and in trying to get that ready. But some of the hotel motel tax on a back burner, some of that work is complete, but I wanted to make sure that it was all complete before presenting.
Were our hotel years cooperative? Was there a problem?
Yes, we have, we have had difficulties in the past, but currently the hotel owners have been cooperating. I just did not make it a priority in our schedule this particular time.
Okay.
Because of the water utility. However, we don't have to wait another quarter for me to get that information to you. I could get, I could send it to you directly or we could schedule another time for presentation if that would be appropriate.
You can just add it to the next quarter's presentation, I appreciate it. I just wanted to check and make sure I had not missed anything. Okay, go ahead, water utility, let's see.
Okay, so we do have three reports today. We'll start with the water utility, which is a larger entity, is actually a division rather than a department that we normally break things up. And we considered splitting this up into separate departmental reports. However, that would be a lot of individual reports, a lot of individual small reports. Then we considered dividing it up by function, let's say water treatment versus water delivery. But ultimately, because the whole water utility division works together in an overlapping way, felt that it was best to do it as we had done it before, which is as one report. However, we took a deeper dive this time around to make sure that we focused on each individual function that we had identified and the results are in the report that you have in front of you now. So I'll go over some of the highlights. We did all of our normal testing such as time sheets, we had no exceptions in looking over time sheets. We looked into purchase requisitions, testing against the county's procurement policies and had no exceptions in purchase requisitions. We looked at purchase cards without any issues there. So very standard things we did across all of the various departments of the Water Utility Division. While performing general inquiries, you'll see that we noted two consistent themes in our interviews with employees. One thing that we want to point out is that everyone spoke about a high level of training that they were receiving. That was very consistent. There was also some discussion that it's difficult to maintain, to hold, to keep employees. But it seems that employees receive excellent training with Columbia County, but there's some turnover in certain positions. You'll see that documented in the section that we call General Inquiries. We would recommend that management consider reviewing the compensation packages. And I'll also point out that, you know, we, our firm prepares a salary study for the county and I don't think these findings are inconsistent with those. So I would refer you to that in salary study. We did test cash collections and deposits. We recounted and traced these various deposits. This is purchases of water and sewer revenues, not purchases, but revenues from water and sewer. We recalculated tap fees. We observed balancing process with the customer service representatives at the end of the day and we also counted petty cash and we found no issues with those various procedures. We did test water and sewer revenues by obtaining billing reports and verified the amount billed was properly calculated and the usage rates were consistent with those set by the commission. And we did not note any exceptions with any of those recalculations. We did note that the schedule on the website was out of date and so we recommend that that be resolved. It may have already been resolved because it's been some time since, some weeks since we noticed that. We looked at late and reinstated account fees. We obtained the cutoff log which shows the citizens that have not paid their water bill and when they're scheduled for cutoff, we selected several of those and we verified that the accounts had indeed not been paid leading up to the time that they were cut off. We noted that the late fee was assessed at 10% of the outstanding balance on those accounts. And then we also took a look at the cut on log, this is after people have made that, made up those late payments and then also paid the fee. And we noticed that those payments had been made before the water was cut back on, traced the deposits to the bank statement and things like that. Also, we looked at new residential customer revenues. This is a $50 setup fee when connecting to county water or starting a new account. We had no exceptions when testing those. And we looked at fire hydrant rental revenues. There is a deposit related to renting the meter to go on the fire hydrant. There's a rental rate and also a rate per thousand gallons. Tested all of those various aspects of that without any issues at all. We looked at tap fee revenues. So we obtained the tap fee receipt book from the business office manager for a period of time. We selected several tap fee receipts. We reviewed the tap fee application, compared it to the tap fee schedule, which there are different tap fees for various applications. I actually went through this myself recently, I had to pay a tap fee.
Good.
And I checked, and I did check and I paid the correct amount. So, yeah, we looked at the individual receipts for these transactions. We detail tested all of that work and found no issues with that. We didn't test mine, I tested that on my own. It also looks into licensing, you know, this is some of the more interesting stuff. You know, of course, the Water Utility Division has a tremendous responsibility for making sure that the drinking water that we receive in our homes is clean and also the things that go back into the river are also clean. One aspect of that is licensing. There are several different employees of the Water Utility Division who are required to have licenses, there are varying types of licenses. But we decided that we were going to dig into this. So we got a listing of all the Water Utility employees who would hold a license and then we, using the Secretary of State's website, were able to verify that everyone who required a license was licensed, the license was current and we did not find any exceptions in that area. There's also environmental reporting requirements. The Water Utility is periodically inspected by the state's Environmental Division. They also have to produce reports on a regular basis. We obtained all of that for the last couple of years, reviewed the inspections that have been performed and found no significant issues whatsoever, which I'm sure we can all rest easy to know that there have been no significant environmental compliance issues. One of the other things that the Water Utility does is they inspect backflow protectors and grease traps at restaurants and things like that. One of the things that we did is we selected newly opened restaurants and other businesses and searched for that inspection of that backflow protector. I don't know if y'all are all familiar with this backflow protector? Okay. I wasn't really familiar with it until I started digging into this and I had to learn a little bit about it. But it is an important part of what the Water Utility Division does and so we selected a variety of new restaurants and businesses and things and we found that there was one new property where the grease interceptor installation was not inspected. One existing property was not tested during 2020 when it should have been, but that was because of COVID. The Water Utility had stopped inspections for a period of time and we verified that it was inspected in 2021. And then we learned about properties that cannot be inspected because the backflow device is of an outdated design that doesn't allow for inspections. That I didn't fully understand because I have not that much knowledge about backflow protectors. So we discussed this workload of the county inspectors and on page 15, we have a little bit of a chart or graph, I should say, indicating that before COVID, there was a steady increase in the number of inspections being performed and we think that will continue as the county continues to grow. The number of inspectors has not increased and so we would recommend considering perhaps additional inspectors if the mission believes that's appropriate.
Personally go out and inspect the grease trap?
No, but I asked my favorite waitress at my favorite Mexican restaurant about the grease trap and where it is and how it works. So I learned a little bit about grease traps, but no, I did not personally inspect the grease trap. Doesn't seem like much fun. Okay.
How is this process cut down?
So I did delve into this quite a bit, but I don't want to misspeak, so let me just, with a grain of salt, you know, just consider that you might need to ask some of the Water Utility Department the precise policies, but my understanding is that you would certainly inspect this backflow device when it's installed. Though the backflow thing, I believe there may be regular inspections over time, but it's primarily when it's installed. So when a new restaurant opens, I say restaurant, that's, you know, a lot of our businesses are restaurants. The county goes out there to make sure that it exists and then I believe there is subsequent inspections on its condition, but it's primarily with existence. With the grease trap, that's a little more involved. I believe that the Water Utility Department shows up at the pumping, when it's being pumped out, make sure it's done correctly and done completely. So that's a little bit more complicated there. So you have multiple inspection points in time at inception and over time. And so as the county grows, as we have more restaurants, more businesses, more opportunities for these inspections to occur, there may need to be more inspectors.
I think we've increased those, haven't we? Aren't we up to like four now? We, one guy and
One.
Are we up to like four guys? So we have increased that.
That's, the one thing we noted about the inspections is that the inspections themselves are increasing.
And this is when everybody comes in for a business license, that's when the backflows are taking place, correct?
That's right, it's actually EPD put a ruling out, if you have a public water system, you must have backflow preventers. When they made the rule, they actually wanted the county to go out and enforce it on everybody at one time. Thought that was a huge undertaking, it was a huge expense for the public, so now as business licenses come in, you have to make sure you meet code. So this has been here for 50 years, there's a chance their backflow preventer does not meet current standard, but if they change ownerships or do remodel or add a wing, that's when we go in and say, listen, bring your backflow preventer up to code.
That is one of the things that we did note in the report in doing our testing, we came across circumstances like that. And since you mentioned that, one of our selected locations, we mentioned that the property can, the backflow protector cannot be inspected because of this older backflow design. I don't know if that means it's buried and not in one of those boxes, but the explanation was that the next time that property is sold or updated, they'll be required to install the current style of backflow protector.
Just saying, a property owner really has a hard time with that because you spend all this money for landscaping, you define your business and all of a sudden you got a box five feet long, four feet up in the air out in front of your business. It looks terrible, it really does. I don't know if that's for ease or convenience or whatever for inspections, but personally, I'd like to see.
We will allow them to go underground if they can drain. That's the biggest thing is keeping the water out of the vault. Tie your vault to a storm drainage system and gravity flow the water out of it, you can't go underground. It's just hard to make that happen.
Never heard that.
Difficult to do, so most people don't.
Like I mentioned, I learned a lot about backflow protectors. I never knew what those boxes were on the side of the road, but we also looked at the acceptance of improvements. When a neighborhood is built, the developer puts the infrastructure in the ground at some point in time, the county takes over responsibility for that and so the county has to come in and review that, inspect that infrastructure to make sure it's correct. And so we investigated that process and tested the acceptance of improvements without any exceptions there. We also looked at inventory. Now, with inventory, and this is the inventory of components, pipes, pipes, things like that. Currently, the Water Utility inventory is not on what we call a perpetual inventory system, which makes it not practical to count inventory. So they are a periodic inventory system rather than a perpetual inventory system, which means at the end of the year, they do a count and correct the inventory records. So at the moment in time that we were performing these procedures, we were unable to count inventory, which is something we've done in the past, or attempted to do in the past, where we select a few items on the inventory listing and then go find them. But I believe there's some consideration for going to a perpetual system, which would work with City Works perhaps, but at this time, we were unable to test inventory balances because of the type of system. Now, the Water Utility Division, I believe, will do an inventory count at 6:30, is that it?
Yeah.
At 6:30. Yeah, it's gonna happen pretty soon. So we really didn't need to do it as well. We decided to take a look at vehicles. We wanted to take sort of an analytical approach to the vehicles. Because there are so many vehicles in the Water Utility Division, we wanted to look at average age and mileage and things like that. On page 17 of the Water Utility Division report, we see some of the statistics that we identified. We also traced the purchase of a truck through the procurement process and noted no exceptions in that, all of the procurement policies were followed in the acquisition of a truck. So we have just a small chart here showing the type of heavy trucks, medium trucks and light trucks, vans and SUVs, the average model year of each, so not very many newer ones. So they seem to be keeping them for a period of time. Average odometer reading would indicate that, not putting too many miles on them and then average miles driven during 2020, the period that we were looking at. So some information there. Our conclusions were that we didn't indicate, we didn't notice any unused vehicles or any misuse of sort of county resources in terms of the vehicles. That's the Water Utility Division. A little bit longer.
Question, maybe more for Matt. Meters? All in the
Radio read.
Radio read. Or we pretty, everything going in new has those.
Right.
We're going back.
Right, we're probably four years away from having every single meter being radio read. We do, probably doing 5,000 of those a year that we put in the budget. Another three or four years, we should have all of them done.
It's a great service for the citizens because you have a leak and all of a sudden you get a call, hey man, you might want to check on something because where you get it two months later and
That actually happened to me. I did have a leak.
Just with the new thing you had installed?
No, this was, it's all kind of related, but this was a little previous, but a vehicle ran over my water meter and broke it and it was just dumping water out into the driveway and I was at work. And a neighbor called to let me know, but in addition to that, it was a phone call that I received from the Water Utility Department because, phone call, because thousands of gallons had flowed out in just a few minutes. So that is a good service, they could tell without having to leave the office. So, any other questions on the Water Utility Division?
Are you good with that truck report?
Actually, I love the average model year.
Surprising, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
They have some, but they don't have as many.
Yeah, we really did try to take a critical eye on the vehicles and just try to think of what could be an issue with the vehicles and we couldn't find any problems in that.
Yeah, how would you even know if it was misused?
Yeah, the, I suppose, there's a certain limit to what I could observe, you know, I can't observe all the vehicles at all times, but the, I would say that the types of vehicles that they own, which we can observe when they're parked in the lot, appear to be the types of vehicles you would expect a Water Utility. So they don't, they don't have a Maserati or anything like that.
Have equipment that costs more than a Maserati.
That may be true.
I don't want to talk about it.
Okay. So the, by comparison to the Water Utility Division, the other two reports I have for you today are somewhat shorter. We did look at the Planning Department and in doing that, we looked at the typical things we look at, purchase requisitions, checking for the procurement levels. We looked at the purchase card transactions, talking about the same thing and other issues that could occur with purchase card transactions and didn't notice any. We also looked at some cash that they have and tested their time sheets. The more interesting stuff is the rezoning requests and variance requests, that's unique to the department. And in looking at rezoning requests, we selected a variety of zoning, rezoning requests and tested those against supporting documentation, the applications that have been filled out for that. So there's a process of, some folks will ask for a fee waiver because there's a fee for a rezoning request and there's a process that the department has of requesting a check for the fee itself and then holding it until after they determine whether the commission will waive that fee. In one instance, we noted that this process had taken place, but there was no documentation of actually getting and holding that check. So the getting and holding of the check is the department's policy and procedure and we noticed in one instance, there was no indication that they had. Ultimately, the commissions, the commission, the commission approved the request for the fee waiver and the fee was not charged. We only noted that there was no evidence that the process had been completed in the way that the department's policy indicated. We also looked at the variance requests, there was also a fee related to that. And when a citizen applies for a variance, there's a specific set of, we have listed here of criteria, I won't read them all to you, but we tested the various variance requests against these criteria, we found all the documentation to be in line, we've used supporting documentation, we looked at the evidence of interdepartmental review of the variance request and we found no issues in our selected instances. Any questions about the Planning Department?
Let me throw in something here. So the way the process works is our internal auditor goes into these departments, does the audit, speaks with management, gets their response and then they send us a draft report, send me a draft report that I then look at and say, okay, proceed forward, we're presenting your draft report. Them sending it to me is not for me to change, it's for my understanding and review so I can get with the other, with the deputy managers, the division directors to determine the best way. This is a great example of how this works. I don't like the idea of holding a check, I didn't know that we did. I don't like the idea of holding a check and I don't really think I'm comfortable with even the new idea of how we're gonna do this. All funds that come into the county should be turned over to finance at the very least. It's my opinion that we should probably go ahead and deposit the check and then if we need to refund them, then we will issue a refund and we have the ability to do that. There's also another school of thought that would say that if somebody's There's also another school of thought that would say that if somebody's gonna request a fee waiver, that the fee waiver be heard first before we do all the work. And I know that's cumbersome, but that's something that could be done if somebody's gonna go through that process. Before we go through this entire process, maybe we need to hear whether or not we're gonna waive the fee. But at the very least, and I'll get with the Planning Department, Matt and I have already talked about it. We, I don't think the county needs to be in the business of holding checks in a lockbox or a safe for two weeks, three weeks, a month, however long that is. It's not good business and I don't think we need to do that. So my recommendation is gonna be that we have a procedure to deposit the funds when we get them. We'll issue a refund if you grant a fee waiver.
And how often does this happen though, really?
It's happening more often because people are understanding that if they, you know, that nobody wants to pay a fee for government services. And the more people do it and the more waivers that are granted, the more requests we get for fee waivers. It's kind of perpetual.
I just don't recall that many.
Uh, we.
Once a year.
We've had more than, we've had way more than one this year. We've had probably five or six this year.
We only granted.
Well, my question is, when y'all do, uh, somebody requests a fee waiver, they come in, the applicant comes in and the staff does the same amount of work for whoever, regardless whether they're asking or not. And we have certain fees or costs that are associated with it, correct? The advertising and all that. So we have a investment in, our staff has an investment in these requests for changes. So that's just way out there circumstance. Don't know that we need to be waiving those.
Well, right, and that's a matter that's gonna come to the board individually each time somebody requests one. But for the sake of procedure, unless this board tells me different, we're gonna start depositing the money when we get it.
As a banker, I would strongly urge that we do that.
Okay.
And also from the internal control perspective, from our audit perspective, I would agree with depositing the check. Why we try to be careful in phrasing, the procedures described in the report are the procedures of the department as we understand them from interviewing department personnel. And, but I agree that deposit the check rather than holding on to it. That would certainly be better.
If a fee was waived, Scott, how long would it take to refund that money? Just a day or?
I mean, if you did it on a Tuesday, we would process that check the next week. It'd either be cut that next Thursday, or that same Thursday, or the next Tuesday.
Not a big deal.
No, I wouldn't think so.
The commission's already granted staff the ability to issue refunds based on mission actions. We have a form that's already in place. Ms. Hall sends them up to me quite often. Process is in place to do this.
Yes, it's quick.
Mention maybe to hear the fee waiver request before the work is done. What is your thought process?
It's just, it's just a thought. I mean, you know, if, if we're gonna go through the, it seems like we're going through this entire process and then we get a fee waiver at the end, it would just be better for somebody to decide whether or not they wanted to go through the process based on the fact whether or not they were gonna pay for it. So, you know, you get to find out in advance if we're gonna waive your fee. And then if you say, well, no, we're not gonna waive your fee, then the applicant has the opportunity to say, okay, well, yes, willing, I'm willing to pay for it, move forward, or I'm not willing to pay for it, I don't want to move forward. I don't know, that's, I, y'all know I don't like bureaucracy and that seems like a very bureaucratic thing to do. It could really throw us off in advertising and hearing the, everything and timing. It could be another month for somebody to do it. I don't know that it's the right thing, but it's, it's just, to the vice chair's point, it's difficult when the staff does the work, we pay for everything and somebody really has in their mind they're gonna have their fee waived. You know, it makes it difficult when we say no, but.
Thank you, we got off track.
That's okay.
Get back on track.
Well, we left it there so we could discuss it, so.
So the final department to discuss today is code enforcement. And similar to every department, we reviewed time sheets, purchase orders, purchase cards, things like that, without any exceptions. We've really seen improvement over the years in the purchase card compliance. We're not, we're not finding issues we used to find in the past. So looking at code enforcement, we did take a look at how code enforcement occurs. There are multiple ways that this can happen. A citizen can call in and complain about everything from someone needing to cut their grass to old vehicles that are in the yard and things like that. Or the compliance employees can discover something themselves. Various different ways this can occur. But we found that we requested and obtained the log of the various noted compliance issues. And we looked at the amount of time it took to resolve the issue, documentation of the resolution. And we tried to determine whether various complaints were handled within forty-eight hours and if it appeared to be resolved in what we consider to be a reasonable amount of time. And it's difficult to establish what a reasonable amount of time is when there's such a variety of different types of code enforcement issues. But we tried to be reasonable in our understanding. And from our perspective, as we looked at the response time and the status, this documented as being opened or closed on the details that we read in the reports, everything appeared reasonable and nothing of the items we selected, nothing was unresolved or held open for a long period of time. So it appears that when a complaint is initiated, code enforcement gets to the, to the person's home and resolves the issue as best as they can and as quickly as they can. We also looked at vehicles in code enforcement. Apparently, they have five vehicles for responding to complaints and follow-up and inspect items. We looked at the listing of the vehicles and reviewed the lifetime maintenance of each vehicle. We compared the mileage to the target mileage for fleet management. So fleet management does have a target number of miles that each vehicle should be able to be on, in the fleet before it's replaced. And we found nothing that was exceeding those standards. And we didn't notice any overly old or overly high mileage vehicles. Everything seemed to be on target. So that's code compliance. Any questions on code compliance? Then I'll update you on the projects. So we have been analyzing hotel motel tax collection or lodging tax collection. I do have some work that's ready for presentation, but I wanted to combine it with some more work. So I'll get that to you at the next meeting. We've also completed the fieldwork for the Board of Elections. That has gone well. We are still working on reporting and review process. That's coming along and I expect to present that at the next meeting. And we've also completed the fieldwork for the Building Inspections Department. We did that along with planning and code compliance around the same time. But the Building Inspections Report is still in progress. So we have those upcoming, upcoming departmental reports for next quarter. And I've also got some additional time scheduled. So I will be looking to get in touch with Scott and find out what departments we might want to look at. Does this committee have any requests for me to look at anything in particular? Well, you can always contact me if you become concerned about any particular department or function or anything that you'd like for me to look at. Happy to do it. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Very good, very good. Is there any public comment or participation, staff comments? All right, having none, I have nothing for executive session for this committee. We will adjourn and come back in three minutes. Thank you.
Perfect.
Morning, welcome to the Management and Internal Services Committee for Tuesday, June the eighth. Calling this committee meeting to order, we've already prayed and pledged. We have a quorum of three commissioners in attendance today. May I have approval of the minutes from our previous meeting, gentlemen?
Saga.
Thank you. Do we have any presentations? Having none and have nothing on the consent agenda, we're gonna move right on into debate. New business, Mr. County Manager, tell us what you have for us today.
First item we have for you is juvenile court independent contracts. And I believe Mr. Rutledge or Judge Evans is gonna come. Terry, you gonna present those?
Good morning.
Judge Rutledge with Juvenile Court and this is Judge Charles Evans. The reason we're here this morning is we currently have eight independent contracts that we're looking to renew for this coming up year. Five of those eight are, there's no changes, same vendor, same terms and conditions, same monetary amounts. The other three, there are slight changes to those. The one belonging to Jennifer Hunter, she, we've got a coordinator of children in need of services. That's Chin's. Last year, Debbie Hatcher, she was with us and she retired. And so we're asking to put Jennifer in her place, same terms, same conditions, at a thousand dollars a month. Ms. Brenda Taylor, he's been our court reporter for about ten years, but we're asking for an increase of ninety-one dollars and fifty-one cent per month for her. And Kathleen Connor, last year she was our attorney guardian alightum and she also carried a dual role of Chin's prosecutor. This year, she has decided she does not want to be the Chin's prosecutor anymore. So we're just gonna move her back down to one role of attorney guardian alightum and we're gonna, we'd like to restore her back at her old rate of two thousand dollars a month. Before she held the dual role, she did, she was our attorney guardian, or one of our attorney guardian alightums.
Terry.
Yes, sir.
The court reporter, do they bill us for hours in addition to this money that we pay them?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay.
No, this was strictly under contract. The new rate if we went with it would be nineteen, twenty-two, thirty-four, that would be it.
Right, so they don't bill the county for any other services?
No, sir.
And second question, with us becoming our own district in three weeks, are all these needed?
Uh, yes, sir, absolutely.
Fire to a point. Conemise. Our children's. Of course, if I have fathers, one mother. Adults and the children. That's why we have more. Rates are pretty steady. I started doing that work. I think it's about. Keeping pace. Also get. About twenty minutes, I've got a hearing. Yesterday. We're under tight timelines. Been a pretty good system, operating around the circuits, things that work throughout. Of course, in Columbia County, probably twenty years. Claiming and judge.
So these folks don't bill us for other monies?
Absolutely.
And these are budgeted items.
Move to consent or is it debate?
Uh, you can go to consent if.
So moved, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you for watching.
Great, Dave.
Thanks, Terry.
All right, next, we've got some property items.
The next item for your consideration is the extension of the State Properties Commission Agreement for DFACS. We received a letter from the State Properties Commission for their desire to exercise their option for another year with the same terms, conditions, and covenants that were already in place. You will remember that the department, the local Department of Family and Children's Services approached just recently about a new building. We were looking at the possibilities of locating them in a new building. And during that process, the State Properties Commission stepped in and said that they would not be moving, even if we wanted to move them. So the State Properties Commission has come back with this agreement. The monthly rental rate is seven thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-nine cents a month and staff recommends approval.
Just to be clear, they are intentionally choosing to stay where they are.
Yes, they are.
The state has chosen that.
Yes, they are. I have the email that basically slapped us on the hand for trying to move them.
Need to engage somebody, well, this is the State Properties Commission.
Yes.
We need to engage somebody at a higher level because it's kind of ridiculous to have this building, have everything going down here. Am I missing something?
Yeah, so obviously it worked out well with our judicial split that we didn't have room in the building anyway because we're gonna fill that now with all judicial functions.
But we don't have room over there now?
Not now, we do not have room over there. But that being said, we will be planning our next splosh in this summer to go to the voters next year. And I think it'd be prudent for us, because of the age of the existing building, to look at the possibility of including some new space for DFACS or a new building of their existing site. We just need to look at the options. But to your point, Mr. Chairman, we are definitely gonna have to get the State Properties Commission on board because we're not gonna go forward with the expense and the hassle of doing that if State Property Commission is not willing to move them. And they have ultimate, they're the landlord for the state.
Move to consent.
So move, next.
Next item you have is the extension of the State Properties Commission Agreement with the Department of Driver Services. We did receive a letter stating their desire to exercise their option for an additional year under the same terms, conditions, agreements. And this one, the annual rental rate is a dollar.
They did agree.
Yeah. So just to give you a little bit of background on this, the Department of Driver Services had a facility in Columbia County many, many years ago, actually in this building, many years ago. And they were moving. They were gonna move out of Columbia County and they were just gonna regionalize and have only the facility in McDuffie County and one in Augusta. At that time, the commission stepped forward and said, we will provide you free space if you will continue to provide driver services for the residents of Columbia County. They have since grown and moved and now we have them off-site. But we pay that lease for them. Basically, it's just an opportunity for the county to provide additional state services for our residents to make it more convenient. So yes, we are on the hook for the actual payment, but it has a tremendous amount of use by our citizens.
Can we just renew it every year?
Every year. It's a one-year lease, yeah. Uh, I'm gonna have to get somebody else to give me that cost. I don't know what it is. My staff knows what it is.
We can, we can get it.
We can go, we'll get it to you. Gary, we've negotiated it in the past. It's a pretty fair rent considering the market rents.
We'll get it.
Yeah, we'll get it for you.
Move to consent.
So move, next.
The next item we have is our employee assistance program. Jeff, you wanna come up? And Jeff's gonna present a couple of these and I probably have some additional commentary, but I'll let Jeff present the EAP for you.
EAP is the first one. Good morning.
Morning, Jeff.
We're asking for the.
We're asking for the third renewal of the Employee Assistance Program. It covers five hundred and forty-eight of our public safety program. The Sheriff's Department uses it one way, the rest of employees use it the other, the other seven hundred and eighty-three employees. So we're recommending renewing that through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
It uses it one way, explain to us kind of what it is and what services it provides.
Yeah, the program, everyone knows it for the required videos, that's one aspect of it. We, our employees use certain videos for the required training, Sheriff's Department does another one. They also have counseling services, you can call them, you can do it on phone, you can get six in-person visits locally. So their employees have a different need probably than our regular employees, so they use it differently. So we separate it for that reason.
Any other questions?
Move to consent.
Got a sec, okay. Thank you very much, next. So moved.
I'll move on to the life insurance. We still refer to it as Cigna, they're being bought out by New York Life. But we're asking for the third renewal of the life insurance through Cigna slash New York Life. There is no rate increase on this. We pay, the county pays for the employee dependent life product, which is about forty-one thousand a year. That price is not going up. They're offering a six percent rate reduction in the voluntary life if our employees want to get life insurance themselves. So that's about a nineteen thousand dollar savings to our employees. They're increasing the issue amount on the life insurance from a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, which is great for our employees. And there's a part under open enrollment, which is good for employees, they don't have to satisfy the evidence of insurability if they want to add on at that time. So depending on your situation, that's a perk.
Was that, those changes were a function of it changing to New York Life, or did you negotiate those?
No, Elizabeth McBurney negotiated this probably before Iver showed up. I don't think that's New York Life, but they're locking this in for two years too.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved, next.
Thank you, Ms. Elizabeth.
Last and not least is the recommendation for our temp workers and handling the payroll for the temp workers. We had six vendors respond to the RFP that procurement set out. At the end, we took the top two rated vendors and our incumbent vendor and had them come in and present to the committee that did all the work for it. After their presentations, they actually wanted to rescore their, what they had done initially because of the presentations, they weren't that comfortable. They had rated one of them really high, and then after the presentation, they wanted to revisit that. So we're coming to you to recommend, after all the scores are in, to keep the vendor that we have, Express Employment. And I don't want to speak on behalf of procurement, but the way those scores are done, half of it is a technical issue, like how they work with us, and the other part's the cost. Now, the committee has nothing to do with cost, we just look at the technical part. So they, you'll see that Express scored the highest on the technical part. They couldn't compete with, for example, that number one vendor, it's huge. It's based out of California, their east coast headquarters is New York, they do have an office in Atlanta, but they're going to have to stand one up here if they did service with us. But the committee was, they second guessed that, their ratings after that presentation. So that's why we're coming to you, asking for the local vendor.
I can add to this as well, I think it's important to note that we know that this solicitation went out to over six hundred vendors. So it cast a wide net, and I don't know if it's because the employment services are having a hard time finding employees like everybody else is, or maybe they're not bidding on as many temp services as typical. But we sent it out, we cast a wide net, we got a few responses, we had a lot of people download it, but we didn't really have a ton of people responding. But all of that said, you know, when you look at the top three, I understand that we're probably, we're recommending the number two as far as score is concerned. But I got to give Jeff kudos, he actually did his homework and put on his investigator hat and went out and started kind of looking at where these people were going to be locating their businesses. And the other two that were finalists here, he mentioned one, does not even have a presence in Columbia County, they're going to have to stand up a presence in Columbia County. You know, one of these vendors actually had a situation where they had worked it out to be working out of a local dentist office, but hadn't really worked out all the details with the dentist yet to do it. It's just not the kind of stuff that we need. We've got a good relationship with Express. They are a little more than the lowest bidder here, that's why I said RFP and not a bid. If it was a straight bid, then we'd go with low bidder, but a lot of times you go with the low bidder, you get the service of a low bidder. But I think one thing that is important to note, there is a one percent rate reduction, I believe, in Express. So Express actually dropped their price from the last contract to keep our business.
I agree with you. I'm in this business. Yeah, move to consent.
Second. So moved, thank you so much. Next. Glenn.
Mr. Corbin Cooney from EMA will present.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. I have the following board appointments for consideration. Region Two, Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, Regional Advisory Council, Community Service Board of East Central Georgia, and the Local Emergency Planning Committee. All these individuals have been vetted by their respective boards, and staff recommends approval of these board appointments.
Move to consent.
So moved, thank you so much. General Services?
Yes, I have three contract renewals for your review. The first one is for external auditing services with Cherry Beckett. The original agreement was approved last year in March. We had the option of four additional one-year terms. So staff is recommending that we exercise the first option to renew for a term beginning July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at the previous year's rate of sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Move to consent. Second.
So moved, thank you, next.
The second contract renewal is with Columbia County Community Connections. As you know, this is a nonprofit organization that provides services to residents of Columbia County. And they provide these services through grants that they receive. However, their grants are reimbursement type grants, and they usually receive quarterly reimbursements. So several years ago, we agreed to basically advance funds to them in the form of a loan. And the amount of those funds are two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe.
It's two fifty.
Yes, and we do receive ten thousand dollars from them for the use of those funds. So staff recommends renewing this agreement with Columbia County Community Connections for another year, July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
The money comes back to us through the grants?
Yeah, well, they pay us, they pay us quarterly, twenty-five hundred dollars a quarter for the use of those funds. And each year we review.
How much do we get back, I guess is what I'm asking, if we're loaning them the money and they're getting grants, or am I misunderstanding?
We provide them the two hundred and fifty thousand, and for the use of that, I guess, sort of like interest, we are earning ten thousand dollars.
On top of that.
A year.
It's actually two twenty-five now.
It is.
Oh, two twenty-five. And we're earning ten thousand a year.
Yeah, okay, they're using, I get that, but then we're getting paid back by grants?
Well, through, yes, they're getting grants.
They're getting the grants.
They're getting the grants.
Because they don't get the grants faster.
Said a loan, so I was just trying to grasp that. Actually, the balance gets repaid.
If we ever decide not to renew the contract, then they would have to repay us.
So they're not paying, we're loan, we're not loaning them, we're giving them two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
To use while they wait on reimbursements from their grants, to operate.
It's their cash flow.
To operate.
Their grants come in quarterly, so they may not have enough cash in the bank.
Right.
Payroll, so we just fronted them, we propped them up with two twenty-five, and it's a perpetual two twenty-five that keeps rolling over.
Yes.
And they pay us ten thousand dollars to use that money.
Yeah, it's not a new two twenty-five every year.
Okay, that's what I was, okay.
No.
So if we don't renew the contract, they owe us the two.
Two twenty-five.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Got it, move to consent. Second.
So moved, next.
And the last contract renewal is with our property and liability insurance through ACCG. This again is for the period July one, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. We are maintaining the same coverage levels as the current year. And you'll see some bullet points there. Our net contribution has increased by twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars, primarily due to growth and adding additional facilities like the Performing Arts Center, additional employees, all of these do cause an increase in the coverage. And we have met the safety discount credit of twenty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And we also receive a dividend credit of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars based on our years of membership. So our total contribution this year will be four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Have we ever bid this out?
We, it's been years.
Forgive me, let me rephrase the question. When is the last time we bid this out?
Want to come up, Darlene? Why don't you come up real quick, Darlene, and discuss this? And there's a little bit of comparing apples to oranges, there are not a whole lot of people that can provide us all the services ACCG does. But I'll let Darlene talk about when was the last time we bid it out. It's been some time.
It's been some time.
I would like to see that locally.
Because it's not just purchasing insurance, because it is a relationship with ACCG. And in partnering with them, we have a tremendous amount of input as to how things are settled or not settled. Columbia County wants, from the commission, we have gleaned that they want that measure of control. If it were strictly a commercial insurance carrier, once you file a claim, they would be deciding one hundred percent what is paid, what is not paid. Particularly with lawsuits, Columbia County likes to hold that line, unless we feel like we really owe something, we will fight it tooth and nail, even if it costs more in attorney fees and settlement, because we don't pay these to make them go away. A commercial carrier, because they're in this to make money, would be settling. And it just, it's very difficult to test the market when that's, we know that's really not what we want to do. ACCG does try and get, the underwriters try and get some comparisons. They did it last year, and it showed that they were coming in significantly less, at least keeping the wide swings in the cost, because last year was a really tough year with the commercial market.
And there's two other things to keep in mind, this is a membership in a risk pool. So we enjoy, you know, the benefits of having other counties participate in this risk pool, thereby reducing some of the cost, you know, through that. And also, we get a lot of educational benefits from this membership as well. So it's not just purchasing insurance, we do get a service.
This is the only thing they do, is counties. So the claims people are very, they have a great expertise in how these, that are different on the private side. And it just, like I said, it's a membership, and if we ever left them, that dividend that we see, that is based on years of membership, we would have to start over.
I think the biggest thing here, to the chairman's point, is it's property and liability. So if it was just, if it was just property insurance, I think we could probably shop that around and get a much better rate. But if we break this out and we do this, we're not going to have the liability that covers you guys, covers us as a staff. We're not going to have our law enforcement liabilities, so when a deputy gets sued, you know, we got to pay for representation. I think you're going to see our legal bills skyrocket, for lack of a better term, because right now, we only pay the first, we pay to a stopgap amount. And once we pay that amount, that's all the liability we have. And if we have a lawsuit that lasts eight years, and we've had those, they pay the entire amount beyond that eight years. We're not going to have that unless you have, that's all lumped in this same thing. If we just add property insurance, we're going to have to have something else for liability insurance, and I don't think we're going to have anything close. So that's the biggest issue is the way that it works. We could try to bid it out just to see what we could get, but again, I think you're going to have to bid out more than one thing. You have to bid out probably two or three, maybe four things.
My two cents worth, when you're looking at property and liability programs, and you get into captives and co-ops, I guess it's technically a co-op, that control that you have in-house to be able to say, this is, you know, this is not self-insured, but this is my control over what I get to do. And in addition to that, the risk sharing, being in that pool makes a big difference. And you're only in a pool with other folks like you, it's homogenous, rather than being in with a trucking company and a grocery store and a general contractor. You're in there with just folks, just organizations and municipalities that are like you. And there's a lot to be said about that, because you're holding each other accountable, because you're in that risk-sharing pool together. And in my experience, because I have some experience with it, with a captive, and it's better than a traditional, and going out to the traditional market. And it's actually hard to get folks to give you a bid from the traditional market, because they're not going to waste the time giving you a bid because they know they can't compete money-wise. So it would be definitely apples and oranges, but it would be hard to get somebody to give you. Because you're wasting their time because you're not going to, the traditional guys are not going to be able to beat them. This is a pretty good price considering how many properties and employees we have. That's just my two cents worth.
I too, in my other life, captive. Very familiar with the process. Talk about it offline.
Sure.
Anything else? Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Move to consent. Second.
So moved. Let's move on to technology. Mr. Blanchard, what kind of money are you spending today?
Lots.
Lots.
Lots and lots of money, it's wild war tie today.
Every Tuesday.
I've actually got three renewals for you today. The first renewal I have is with Layer Three Communications for Managed Security Services. Managed Security Services, really the core of that is our Security Incident and Event Management System. Layer Three provides us with services basically where they watch our network for us. We've given them the ability to monitor our network traffic, and they provide twenty-four by seven access, or I'm sorry, twenty-four by seven monitoring in order to determine if there's any network traffic that is inappropriate, that's anything related to a security breach. And obviously, we've heard a lot about those lately. This is our partner that helps us to make sure that our network is secure and that and our darn is to make sure that we're not subject to any. The original agreement with Layer Three was approved by the commission in twenty nineteen, so it's reached its first renewal period. This is the first of four possible renewals that we're asking for. This has been budgeted in IT's operating budget for seventy-seven thousand dollars. So the staff is recommending approval of this agreement for a one-year term from July twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
Report periodically, says, hey, we tried to hack in, and here's what we found, or what specifically?
No, well, they don't do a security assessment. We do those separately, then where we engage with vendors to attempt to hack it into our system. What this company does, it's really like providing an extra, a backstop or an additional resource that's monitoring our network traffic. We have employees that do that, but they work from eight to five every day. And they get notifications if, you know, in the middle of the night, if there's something that's going on. What Layer Three does is they provide twenty-four by seven access or security in their security operations center, where they're constantly monitoring. And if one of the, if they detect an event that's above a certain threshold that looks like a threat, they let us know. But in the meantime, they're already implementing the fix that would stop the attack from happening. So it's an invaluable service, seventy-seven thousand dollars for that is a bargain.
At some point, does this?
No, ma'am, it does not. This is, this is an adjunct, or it's a, it's a, I guess that's a good word to use, adjunct to our existing staff to provide us that twenty-four seven access. If we were to stand up our own security operation center and staff it, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not billions.
Four hours a day?
It is twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four to seven.
Because debate in here for some reason, is it?
I don't think so, no.
Moved to debate.
I think it was last, that was the last time it was, it was done.
I attached the previous agenda, and approval, everything like that.
Or second.
So moved, next.
All right, the next item I have for your consideration is a renewal of our agreement with Dell. Dell provides all of our desktop equipment, our desktop PCs, laptops, tablets, monitors, things like that. This one was approved in twenty nineteen as well. And there is not a fixed price for this one. Basically, this is part of IT's lifecycle replacements. So one year we may pay, have to replace a hundred PC laptops, the next year we may need to do a hundred and fifty. So what we've done is budgeted in next year's budget, and the amount we have targeted right now for that would be two hundred and seven thousand dollars that we would spend with Dell. That's the minimum right now that we would spend with them.
What's the maximum?
That's the maximum.
I'm sorry, the, that's the, that is budgeted in IT's capital for next year. Staff is renewing renewal, recommending renewal of this agreement with Dell for a one-year term from July one, twenty twenty-one. one-year term from July 1, 2021, through 30th of 2022.
Do you have a disposal program for when, when we replace these, these desktop units that, you know, they're not broken, we're just replacing them because of lifecycle? What do you do with the ones that?
We evaluate every piece of equipment that comes in, and Sean McCardle is here, he could speak more with more detail about this. But typically, what we do is wipe the machines completely, and then we'll sell them through GovDeals. Actually, I said Sean, but.
Or recycle them if they're.
They'll be, right, gouged and hard drives destroyed.
Okay.
Move to consent.
Second.
So moved, next.
Final item I have for your consideration today is a renewal of our agreement with Fred Daniel Mapping Services. Fred Daniel Mapping Services is the company that we used to do our tax parcel mapping. That's a longstanding relationship that we had with Fred Daniel. Essentially, what happens is all of our parcel updates that take place are sent to Mr. Daniel's company. They will then map the parcels out and send it back to us in electronic format, so that we can grade it with our parcel map. I need to give some kudos to the GIS department for some work they've done. They're, they're working to automate that process to make it more efficient. And Mr. Daniel and his company have been very receptive of any changes that we wanted to make there. So highly recommended by the staff that we renew our agreement with Fred Daniel Mapping Services for one-year term from July 1, 2021, through June 30th of 2021. And this is budgeted in GIS's.
Move to consent.
Second.
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Having no other items from that section, do we have any legal matters? Unless we move on to.
There's no.
I'm sorry?
No, and Mr. Driver's not here today. He apologized for his absence.
Move on to staff reports.
First item you have is just your personnel savings year-to-date. This is, again, you can see that number has now exceeded $1 million. A lot of this has to do with the fact that we're having a hard time filling positions. We have evaluated a lot of those positions in the next year budget. Some of these positions have actually been eliminated or modified. But as you know, we are going through a process now of looking at our salaries to try to make them more marketable. So while this is a good number, hopefully, it won't be as high next year. That's just for your information.
Number of open positions?
I'll have to get the total number. Jeff, do you know, or Elizabeth? 93 total openings right now. Does that include the sheriff? Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
The next report is the year-to-date budget report. This is for the month ended May 31st, and we should be operating around 92% of the budget. We are in the final month of the fiscal year, so we will have that information on the year-end budget in the next couple of months. But as is customary, I have added the major funds on the rec sheet for your review, and everyone is currently operating well within their budgets. Yes, the second report is the SWAST update. We have received funding through the month of April. That amount was just over $2.6 million, and our annualized percentage increase is now 20.74%.
Love the percent, but also, my perspective is, government's printing money and people are spending it, so we just have to make sure that we manage our finances accordingly around here, because I'd be shocked if it continues at the levels.
Move on to the investment.
The next item is the investment summary as of April 2021 for your review.
How are you finding the renewal rates on some of the investments? Still have low interest rates?
Very low, yes.
Are we managing that by having shorter term?
Yes, I don't put it out long at all right now.
Brown, hate to see inflation, hate.
And we have been fortunate enough to find some liquid accounts that are paying well above these types of investment rates. So when we get that opportunity, we do that.
Reports, I have nothing for executive session. Is there any commissioner or public comment? None? We adjourn and return back in?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, thank you.
Yes, sir. Development Planning Service Committee. We've had the invocation, the pledge, approval of the minutes. Can't read them over?
Second.
Still moved. The agenda, Mr. Johnson?
No change, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, sir. No presentations. Let's go into the debate. Item 1A.
All right. Excuse me. The first item we have for your consideration is alcohol beverage license for Manchiv Enterprise LLC doing business as the liquor market. This is one we had postponed from last month, and we'll revisit, revisit all these requirements. We have some additional backup information that I think that would help from, help you all visualize the requirements that are needed to be met. The applicant has applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer, wine, and still spirits for off-premise consumption from 1011 Walgreen Drive. The applicant has provided all the required information, has posted the property as of April 11, April the 14th of this year. The applicant is asking for a waiver to Columbia County Code Section 6-56, which is automatic forfeiture for non-use. And what that states is, if from the time they get their certificate of occupancy, they have 60 days to open and do business, or 180 days from the issuance of this license. They're, they can, it's going to take a little bit of excess of time to get that structure built and them to get open and operating, so they're requesting that date be 270 days from the issuance of license. As part of, and that we have not had any, no interest in this outside of the applicant applying for this. As part of the backup information, we do have the site survey, because in order to meet our requirements from the county, you have to be 300 feet from a church building, 600 feet from any public, one of the county schools, building, county parks, playgrounds, or alcohol treatment facility. And then the state has a requirement of 1,500 feet from the next business that is selling retail, retail package. On these maps, you have the site map, the site survey, which was provided by a licensed surveyor, which it just gives you the 300-foot ring showing that there are no churches within that boundary. That aerial that we've attached as well gives you all three of those rings, and it shows everything well outside of the distance requirements necessary to, for us to approve alcohol license. After viewing all this information, staff does recommend approval of this license and the variance of Section 6-56.
It being so close to the church across? But also.
I think we got your, so the motion on the floor is to approve, but to deny the variance request, correct?
Is that going to effectively kill the project?
That, I'm not sure. The applicant, I believe, is here. Yes, applicant's here, and he could speak to that.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, I think the reason.
Yeah, give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Niran Patel, and the reason we are asking for the extension is because it is just plain sight right now, plain land, so we have to still plan and build, building on it. And we are working with Columbia County various utility departments to see how to best fit the plat on it. And because there are several, like, there is a main water line running through the property, so we have to be 20 feet away from it. So we were just made aware of it a few weeks ago. So all these obstacles, we are anticipating, we will move in as soon as possible. We are anticipating little delay in opening more than 60 days.
Is this a freestanding retail store, or is this a strip center?
It's going to be, we are planning for a strip center with at least.
And still build the strip center?
Yes.
Whether or not you have the alcohol license or not, correct? Go forward with the construct?
I would rather not do it if we do not get the alcohol license, because that's one of the prime things that we are trying to bring in.
Is this a question? Yeah, I'm just trying to, alcohol license for a liquor store.
Correct.
So, but where's the strip center? Is there a?
Right next to Walgreen.
No, no, I'll be, I get that, I'm trying to, there, what's, what does the strip center look like? Is there anything in here that? Augusta Land Survey?
Yes.
For sideways? Strip center that faces Walgreens?
That's correct, yes, sir.
There be a drive-in window, sir?
No.
Yeah, I will, I'll second move to debate. Senator debate.
I second.
I'll modify it to say debate, so we can have time to talk this through.
That's fine, you can amend your motion to move it to debate if you're okay with that. If not, then he can decide to second the motion as it is, or not second it as it is.
Okay, I will amend my motion to debate for the approval of the license and for denial of the variance. Debate for?
I think it'd be for the next commission meeting. So your motion is now amended.
So we're going to discuss it again in open commission.
So you'll second her amended motion?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
You have a second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to move to debate with the amended motion. So moved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Going on to new business, item 12A.
All right. Item 12A is alcohol beverage license for Sprint Food Store doing business as Sprint Foods, 749 Sprint Food Store has applied for an alcohol beverage license to sell beer and wine for off-premise consumption from 4915 Wrightsboro Road. The applicant has provided all the application and all the information required, and we have had no opposition to this one as well. And attaches that site survey and the aerial photo showing that there are no churches, playgrounds, schools, and/or package stores within the separated distances required. And staff recommends approval of the license at the July 6 VOC meeting.
Move to.
Got to go to debate?
It does not have to go to debate.
Okay, all right. So moved. Next item, sir.
All right. Before you today is a resolution to adopt the Vision 2035 Comprehensive Plan. As you recall, we started this process about a year and a half ago, last February, worked our way through the process of soliciting public input to see where we needed to take our plan over the next five years, update and develop a new work program for staff to achieve those goals and objectives that were solicited and obtained through the public input process. And with our consultants GMC, we've submitted that both to the Regional Commission and to the Department of Community Affairs for their review and approval. You have a copy of that letter from DCA for your review and consideration, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion carries. We'll move on to the legal matters. Staff reports. Go ahead, sir.
All right. First up is the May 21 Planning Department workload measurement monthly report, and there's no further action required. Answer any questions you might have. All right. And also attached is the April 21 Plan Review workload, workload report for any questions I can answer for you.
Questions? Boom, sir.
The next we have is the May 2020, 21 Development Services Monthly Report, and a copy of that is attached for your information if further action is required. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions?
From this May compared to last May, fire marshal incident? I don't do that, or just?
No, the typically way we'll have those, it depends on the type of occupancy that we're reviewing. Where there are months where we can get in quite a large number, where we have like the Walmarts, where it takes you several hours to walk down a Walmart, and those larger box stores. So we're into the area where we're walking down those larger office buildings and such. Right, and the next report we have is the 2021, May 2021 Development Services Financial Report, and a copy of that is attached for your information if no further action is required.
Questions?
Next, we have the temporary alcohol permits, and a copy of those are attached for your review, no further actions required.
Questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Down to commissioner comments or any public comments. No executive session, move for adjournment at 9:56.
Yeah, me too.